Okay, so I'll give you a quick update. Candidate Ebi, he did not realize that we were live. So he's going to make his way over here.
Okay, so we'll be joined by candidate Ebi as soon as he gets here. So as Dev said, my name is Barb Lyman and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton and your moderator this morning. I live in Los Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of you that are participating in the forums today. Just some background on the League. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil-civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. All candidates on the ballot were invited today. Participating in this morning's forum for Glenbard District 87 are Jason Bastian and Margaret De La Rosa and hopefully soon, candidate Ebi. Due to schedule conflicts, Peter Nolan and Amar Patel were unable to be here today. So the format for today is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. All candidates today have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order by with their 90-second opening statements. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for 90 seconds. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a 90-second closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will be acting as timer and I will enforce the time limits. Candidates, you will see a panel to let you know when you have one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. To ensure that the questions for today's forum represents a balance of topics, a panel of experienced board members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. So let us get started. Candidate Bastian, you have 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Hello, so I am going to try to drag this out for Kermit's sake. If you don't mind helping me for the first bit and get to the stop. Right now, I feel like Toni Kukoc. Hopefully by the end, I don't look like Will Perdue up here. Very much admire these two. Currently, I serve on the District 93 School Board, which covers most of Carroll Stream, parts of Hanover Park, and Bloomingdale. I am a past PTA president. I am the current PTA treasurer, but most importantly, I'm a husband to an educator and a father to three brilliant, beautiful girls. Not partial at all. Recently, Glenbard went to referendum, and when a school district does that, it can inform the community about the referendum, but it must stay impartial. So a committee of citizens came together and we promoted the referendum. Those vote yes signs, those flyers, online ads, texts, that was us. I was proud to serve on that committee and it introduced me to many amazing people throughout the Glenbard community, Northwest, East, and the Southside Raiders. The process helped me realize that I didn't want to follow my daughters to Glenbard. I wanted to lead the way for them, for their friends, to address the challenges their friends will face. I want to make sure they have another advocate on the board, for the friends who are immigrants, for the friends who face academic challenges because they get ill, for the friends with anxiety, low self-esteem, those who are still questioning who they are as a person. I want to be up here to advocate for those students. Thank you.
Candidate De La Rosa.
Good morning, and thank you to the League for hosting this. We have so few outlets, I think, for races, local races, and so it is much appreciated, along with the Daily Herald, who always does such a consistently good job. My name is Margaret De La Rosa. I have been on the board since 2015, and you're probably wondering why I'm still here. I'm running because my board members asked me to run. So just so you know, you probably all received in the mail the newsletter, which I am very proud to have my face on because of the accomplishments that we have achieved in District 87. But more about that later. But the reason I'm running is because my board members asked me to. We just hired our new superintendent, who will start July 1st, and it's Principal Santi, who is here at Glenbard South. She will be taking the place of Dr. David Larson, who we are very, very sorry to see leave, but we're on to new things. So that's why I'm running, to make that transition for her and to get her off to a good start, as well as give my board members time to take the reins.
Thank you. Well, we'll begin with questions as we wait for candidate Ebi to arrive. And so the first question is this, and it'll begin with candidate De La Rosa. What are your three overall education priorities that you would like to accomplish during your time in office?
Well, I would not say that I have educational priorities. My priority as a board member, first of all, is the cohesiveness of our board, putting those goals in place for the superintendent. And it is really the cooperation between the board and the superintendent to establish those goals. My guess going forward, from where we are today, is our goals will remain the same because we believe that consistent goals has gotten us where we are today. And so right now, we're leading the nation in the number of students both taking AP and scoring over three, three or better for college credit. So I think we're on a good path with our goals. And like I said, that will be between the board and the superintendent to establish those going forward.
Candidate Bastian.
I do agree that the district has great goals. You can find them online. Some of my priorities would be looking at every student, and I think we do a great job with that now, the trades. We have to realize that some of us are great at AP classes and some aren't. We don't want to lose focus on those kids. We do a great job now, but we can always do better. No matter how good you're doing, you can always do better. And so I would still want to continue to advocate for those students. And then we also have to look at the students who are doing AP classes, dual-credit classes, and realize how expensive college is getting, and we don't want them to lose focus. And we have to make sure that we can get more kids into that way, but also make sure that we keep fighting the stigma of community college to get those students to take more of those classes, so that after one year at COD, they can go to UIU, UC, or UIC, or University of Springfield, they're guaranteed entrance, to keep fighting for that. But also, I want to continue the practice of hiring diverse staff. I know it can be a challenge sometimes. There can be a stigma between college graduates and what teaching Glenbard is like. And I want to continue to fight that, so that our staff does a better represent, better represents what our students look like. I know we're working towards that, but I want to continue working towards that.
Thank you. We do have a question about the referendum. The 2024 District 87 referendum passed with only about 400 votes. What will you do to make sure this money is spent responsibly? And what can District 87 do to reach out to the community where almost 50% voted against this measure? And candidate Bastian, we'll start with you.
I think the board has done a great job so far of putting presentations at their meetings of what improvements are being done. They are explaining what they're doing in each school. They're explaining why they chose that. I have already seen some slight adjustments, and that was very well explained on why those adjustments are. My own house, every time I do a renovation, I have something planned and I have to change it because there's something I find that isn't there. And so I understand there's going to be some distraught community members where they're like, "You promised us this, and it's not how it happened." But we have to explain to them that some of these buildings are 100 years old, everything else is 50 to 75 years old, and there might be some slight changes. But we also have to let them see that this is absolutely about their children, their future, their grandchildren, that it's about your home value as well. If you are planning on retiring to Canada Soon, or Florida, whatever you choose, you want to be able to have a house for sale that young families want to move into. And so we have to push that. I think they're doing a great job of spreading the referendum out over three years, so that the immediate effect isn't seen. We all know inflation is hurting everybody. And so I applaud the district for the timing of that, so that it doesn't come at us all at once.
Thank you. Candidate De La Rosa.
This is really a great topic. I've been actually at the board table many times saying the same thing. We did not win this referendum in early voting, on the same day voting. We ran it by, we won by vote by mail, and it was 400 votes. So I have been impressing upon the administration that we need to continually communicate through the process, which is why you'll see on the newsletter the renderings of the projects that are planned. This was around student collaboration space, and you will continue to hear, you will continue to see the administration host forum after forum, so that community is involved in the process and understand what's happening in each of the buildings.
Thank you. We do have a question about something that's been in the news lately. And the question is, how will the possible shutdown of the Federal Department of Education affect District 87? Candidate De La Rosa.
You know, this is, I'll just let you in on a secret, I guess. This was a question that we posed to our superintendent candidates, because it was a pressing issue, and as many of you know, it was also part of Project 2025. So there's about $16 billion in IDEA, and then I think another $13 billion in Title I. Glenbard East is a Title I school, is obviously a big concern for us. If we were to lose that money, we're told we're not losing that money, it's just going to be dispersed somewhere else. That's what we know in the news. I don't know how that's really going to play out. But for us, it will be, it could be the reduction in force for all of those staff members who support students of need, of special needs. So that's something to keep in mind, which means, but the mandate may still stay. So what does that mean? That means that comes back to us as taxpayers. So we're going to have to watch through, we're going to watch this as it happens in the news, and we'll be communicating with communities on exactly what will happen. We do five-year plans, so we're always making adjustments as we learn things in the news. But I will tell you that we will rally on this point.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian.
So yes, we, in our elementary district, also face the challenge of figuring out what we're going to do. We have multiple Title I schools, and we use that for reading services. And so that supports our most vulnerable readers. And so we had to look at what it was. We were told the same thing, that, you know, "Oh, you'll still get your money." But as we've seen with many of these changes recently, one thing is said and something else happens because of confusion and the rushing of the changes. So you do have to be proactive, and unfortunately, it will probably mean a reduction in force. And fortunately, we have partners in Springfield who will fight for us. I feel they will do everything they can to help supplement that, but at some point, it will fall back on taxpayers. And so we have to recognize those challenges, and as we come up on something, start to probably choose priorities a little bit. We need to maybe look at how our boundaries are looking and adjust some changes there, so that when we are doing a reduction in force, hopefully it's just a retraction, so that we can better service every student if there are changes that we are unfortunately unable to make it past.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian. What role should the school board have in regard to curriculum or books in the library?
Leave it to the professionals. Sorry for getting loud there. Let's just start with the library. I trust the staff to make the decisions. They know better than we do. I am not going to ever advocate for the banning of curriculum, the banning of books, because some parents might find it offensive. I believe it is up to staff to decide what is appropriate for their building, and I will trust them fully. As far as curriculum, we set the goals for the district academic-wise, and it is on administration to pass that down and find a way to give us those goals, let them choose the curriculum. Yes, we do approve it through budgetary reasons and so forth, but it's not on me to choose curriculum. Trust me, you don't want me choosing the curriculum for any of the students. But I do want to make sure it's a challenging curriculum that pushes our students to be the best they can. And as long as administration says this is a curriculum for that, I approve.
Candidate De La Rosa.
We have administrative team who are involved in curriculum, and you should know that it's a collective effort throughout the district, because we're one Glenbard. So when, and we're on a regular rotation of each subject area. So when it's time for those subjects to come up, it's the whole district that comes together to decide who's going to be part of that, driven by the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. As well in that is also pathways to other career paths. You should know that students in Glenbard are required to have a four-year plan, not only while they're with Glenbard, but they're also required to have a post-secondary plan, which means what are their plans beyond high school? And we have administrative staff that work with them through that plan, so that they're joining, they're containing those courses and those experiences that they need in order to fulfill their plan, and it follows them all the way through. In some cases, we also follow kids through the summer who have committed to a semester or a year at COD, to make sure that they fulfill those plans and that they're moving forward.
Thank you. Candidate De La Rosa. It's been mentioned that you have a new superintendent starting that school year. What do you see as her biggest challenge, and how should the board support her in that?
Her biggest challenge? Well, I think it's a challenge is just the transition between the style of Dr. Larson and Ms. Santi. But one of the things that I do know is that she has garnered the support of her fellow principals, and that is evident over and over again. Even the person who was really closely, could have been clearly another choice, said, "You picked the right person." She has, she is, and as long as she has earned the respect of her fellow educators, I think we're on a good path.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian, same question.
She has big shoes to fill, in my opinion, but I have faith that she can do it. As in any new role, I think we're, we as a board, or whoever is up there as a board, will have to give her some grace in filling that role, but I don't feel like it's going to require much. I am very impressed with her. I think she's a wonderful person. I think our students are in great hands. As someone who has three daughters coming up through the Glenbard system, I hope for the next 17 years, she will be up there. With that being said, I think her biggest challenge will be what we are facing now as far as uncertainty at the federal level. And we, as we touched on the referendum, are doing projects on four schools, making sure that that fits the needs of everyone, school safety. I feel she will probably, and us, or whoever is up there, will get pushed back on that. So I feel as long as we are united as eight, we will get through it together, and if we give her the support, she will give us the support, and I think that will give every student the support they need.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian. Glenbard introduced the block schedule into its high schools this school year, which created 90-minute blocks for each class. In your view, has this change been beneficial to students?
For those who say no, I say give it time. I came through a block system. Thank you. I came through a block system as a student myself, and it probably took a year or two of adjusting, but I saw the benefits. Being in the class longer, my teacher was able to dive deeper into a subject. Whenever we started talking about something, the bell rang on a shorter day, it was a little bit more difficult. But when we were able to get in there and keep on going, I was able to absorb more of it. Off of that, it would let me focus more at night on the homework of what I was needing for possibly the next day. Instead of having to rush everything at once, I could spend more time focusing on the few. And as I explained to a student who came to the civics forum at Glenbard North, who wasn't necessarily for that, or the changes in the schedule time-wise, this is what you're going to be facing in college. If you're going to a two-year or four-year school, you're not going to the same class every day. So you need to get used to one day being something, one day being something different. So we are just preparing you for what you're about to enter into. And I think I might have won over with that one, if you don't remember.
Yeah, we are in our first year of the block schedule. The intention is deeper learning, not more learning. You know, teachers sometimes think you have to have all this curriculum right, and that's defined period of time. This allows students to go deeper. And Jay's right, we're, we hear different things. Just so you know, we have students on every one of our board committees, and we listen to those students. So we're always, you know, trying to assess what's actually happening, and they bring us such great information. So we're, you know, we have some students who really love it, and some students who are not so sure. But I think overall, they like the later start.
Well, research would back them up, right? So starting your next question with candidate De La Rosa. How do you handle disagreement among your fellow board members to reach a decision?
Delicately, respectfully. I think, I think we have a board that comes to the table in good faith, prepared, and ready for meaningful discussion. And I think when we have that, I think we can, we can meet each other. We don't always agree, and you'll find that there are, you know, we purchased some property near Glenbard West, and it was, there was a divide. And someone said, way out of board members, "Can I vote against?" So I'm like, "Absolutely. We're not here to vote all the same way. We want to listen to each other's opinions." So, but we do it so respectfully.
Thank you. Welcome, candidate Ebi.
I have a tardy pass.
Can I just mention, board member Ebi is an educator of educators, so I always cherish his opinion.
I'm sure many will remember the tardiness, and you will hear about it over and over again.
Oh, boy. I apologize. I'm sorry. I thought it was on line.
Yeah, it was a miscommunication, and we totally understand. What we're doing is we're handling the question of, how do you handle disagreement among board members, or when board members are late?
Wow, okay. Well, first of all, everything that Margaret said, I'd probably agree with. Is that safe? And I'm going to use a lot. I think it was more contentious in the beginning of my term, when we had voices that I would argue were a little bit reactionary. So, and I still really feel as though I'm surviving. I just got back from Costa Rica last week, and I, politically, I came back into this environment from which I was apologizing to Canadians and, you know, I think you get that. But it really, what Margaret said when I was coming in, that there's a great deal of collaboration, and I'm, as a teacher, a lifelong teacher, I've been teaching for almost 45 years on the secondary level and the collegiate level, and our administration in Glenbard is amazing. I'm so satisfied. And usually, I ran into conflicts occasionally concerning these issues. And we have a wonderful relationship with our union, which is also really important. I mean, it really is a district where teachers want to come to. And I have a lot of friends, colleagues, who want to interview at Glenbard. 15 seconds.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian. Same question.
So on our current board, philosophically, we mostly align. And so whenever there's disagreements, it's about the fine details. And I think as long as you respect each other and come from a place of understanding that everybody is hopefully putting students first, which I know on our board does, and I would say my opinion of the current Glenbard 87 board is they do come from a place of putting students first. As long as you come from that, you are allowed to disagree on the fine details and share your opinions, and that can, I believe, bring out the best in everybody, as long as you're doing it in a respectful way, so that you help understand where you're coming from, especially on like the purchase of the property, for instance. Disagreement there, and you're allowed to vote no and explain yourself. And I think when you do that, you help understand how someone is thinking, which helps you understand your board better, helps you work on your priorities as a board, strengthens your position for whenever you're advocating for something else, because you understand what their priorities are. And so as long as you're being respectful of manner, debate away, and put students first, we will all do better.
Thank you. Well, candidate Ebi, we're going to let you go first, since we haven't heard a lot from you, because I rub this in. Sorry about that.
No, sorry.
It's the teacher in me that can help it. So the next question is, there have been several threatening incidents recently in the high schools. As a school board member, what measures will you propose or support to keep students safe?
Was this on a local level or a national level?
Local level.
Yeah, because I have plenty of ideas on a national level. I have three children who've gone through Glenbard East, and they experienced many of those events. And I think the big, the most important thing is from the bottom up, you know, the teachers are made aware of this, and then we continue to maintain a really strong program of support for the kids who, with social workers and counselors and so forth, and that we recognize that these issues run deep in our culture. And I mean, that's one of the things I really love about Glenbard East, is we have this great diversity, and to maintain the safety, we have to continue to communicate with parents and with the local police and our security companies. I guess I could elaborate a little bit about where the relationship between the students and the teachers and the administrators are critical. So maintaining a safe environment is also maintaining a place where the children feel secure and welcome.
Thank you. Candidate Bastian.
So 90 seconds isn't nearly enough for this one. In our district, we had a fourth grader bring a loaded gun to a school, and he did it two days in a row before we found the gun. And so it shook our entire community. This was the first time it's happened in our district, and we tried to solve it in a way that district administration thought was best. We had a town hall at the school, and then we saw how angry the parents were. And we realized the process we were going through was not working, and so we stopped that process and we listened to the parents. That's what we had to do. We had to see their concerns. It was their children. We changed a lot of policy through that, and unfortunately, these situations do end up changing policy. But the goal is to always make students feel safe, to always make staff feel safe. You have to make students feel welcome. Unfortunately, until we change the gun epidemic in our country, this is going to be something every school district is facing. And as long as we can work with our staff, which we have a great relationship with, and make every student feel welcome, we will make every student feel safer. We know their apparent concerns. We need to make sure that we don't go overprotective and take away some student rights in that, but we also need to make, sorry, we also need to just listen and respect everyone involved.
Thank you. Candidate De La Rosa. Same question.
Yeah, so I wanted to, and I guess I'm going to focus this really on Glenbard East parents. Some of you may know, we had a pretty heated couple of meetings because the incident was at Glenbard East. And there was, you know, a large outcry for the board to do something more, and there was a parent group that wanted metal detectors. And that would have been a great, maybe a great reaction, maybe not, but we took a step back. We do have a security team that's made up of members of all of our schools, where they actually do go through exercises, and everyone knows, you know, the things that they need to do, and there are people that are in charge. And we have, we have brought that group, again, that group is meeting regularly, because we're all concerned. That's our, you know, we want to keep our students safe, as well as our staff safe. So we're moving along that. We also have made an agreement with an organization to have dogs periodically in the, in the building. to have dogs periodically in the, in the building. But I think our focus, our, our continued focus has always been on respecting the student, respecting the staff member, and making sure the kids feel that they belong in all aspects of, of education and their educational experience. And also recognizing that, that staff need to meet those needs of the students. And, and do, we also want trusted adults in the building, so that connection between staff, and it could be anyone, it could be someone in the cafeteria, really just keeping in touch with students. Because it's, what we have is society coming inside our doors. And so we're not going to solve it on the national level, but we have to solve it within our buildings.
Thank you so much.
Can I add real quick?
But that was our last question. And I'm afraid we didn't get to all the questions submitted by the community. But I'm sure the candidates will make themselves available after this forum for you to talk to them individually. So with the candidate Bastian and candidate De La Rosa's permission, I'd like to grant extra time to candidate Ebi for his closing statement, if that's all right with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So we'll begin with candidate Bastian. You have 90 seconds for your closing statement.
What I was going to add is I supervise student teacher. Oh, first of all, sorry.
I'll go last, so you have a little more time. My journey to the school board started as a husband who wanted to understand what his wife's day was like. It progressed to a dad who wanted to be a part of his daughter's education. From being the only dad at the PTA meeting to eventually being the dad running the PTA meeting, to the dad sitting in the corner of a preschool classroom reading Fox and Socks while a bunch of kids climbed all over me. And if you haven't read that book, try reading it fast, and then they'll ask you to read it faster. And then good luck. And it wasn't even my daughter's classroom. She was in the classroom across the hallway, but I wasn't needed there. I was needed in the other classroom. I'm no longer the PTA president, but staff still reach out asking if I will volunteer for something for their classroom because they know I will. Because they know I agree with Paul Wellstone that we all do better when we all do better. My philosophy is to do the greatest good for the most students and the students who need it the most. That is how I have always voted as a board member, and as long as I am a board member, no matter what district, that is how I will always vote. Thank you to the League for having us. Thank you for everyone for coming out. And I will give my last 15 seconds to current.
But we'll, we'll hear from candidate De La Rosa next.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm going to really enjoy having Jay on the board. So, I want to say, I don't know. I, we are, we are really proud of where we are as a district. But Jay is right. We can always do better, and we can always deliver better things for our students across the board, right? We want as many student, we want student success across the board. And that's welcoming, having welcoming buildings, facilities that meet their needs, and teaching staff who want to be there every day. And I think we have a lot of that, but it always can get better. And I look forward to doing that with our new superintendent.
And candidate Ebi, we do want to say thank you so much for dashing up here. And I'd like to give you two minutes and 15 seconds for candidate Bastian for your closing and opening statement combined.
I brought a couple of essays. No, I was going to add.
Not the dissertation, please.
Not the dissertation. I'm a lifelong learner, and this has given me so much more opportunity to continue my education. I supervise student teachers in CPS for UIC. And just this week, I've been in Back of the Yards and Little Village, and they have metal detectors. And it's, and I have to go through it as, as an educator. And, and the kids there are incredibly motivated. They're also very frightened right now because of political climate, and the teachers are as well. And I don't think that's fair to our students. And, and again, my emphasis would be to continue and maintain the standards that we've established. I, I quote James Baldwin all, all the time because I'm just invigorated by his, his integrity, but also his desire to make not only his friends and colleagues and those of us around us living a better life. So when, when we look at our district ideals of diversity and equity and fairness, I'm not going to stop standing for those things. There's no way. That's exactly what I loved about David's leadership and how he came in as a Christian, but also maintaining his desire to protect our Muslim students and our, all of our students and all of their, all of their experiences as legitimate. Because we, somebody said the other day, we don't live in a nation, we live on a planet. Get it? And, and everything that we've worked for in my career, my grandfather's career, he was called in front of the House Un-American Activities Committee in the 50s, by the way, because of his ideals and his, his recognition of the, of unions and representation. I, I just don't want to lose any of this that we've worked so hard for. Multiculturalism, we started the Gay-Straight Alliance in the 90s. There is no reason why our LGBT community should be frightened or fearful of, of this. We need to protect them. And, and I'd love to discuss, if there are any Trumpers out there, I will, I'm more than open to talk with you because when they came to our school board meetings and attacked us, it was a good thing I had a mask on.
Thank you.
Okay, never mind. Blessings for all of you participating in this democracy. That's what it's all about.
Thank you. Please join me in thanking the candidates. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope each and every one of you will inspire your family, friends, and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found at illinoisvoterguide.org and the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen website and social media. We hope you will take advantage of early voting, which started on March 17th since Election Day falls during spring break. Recording of this forum will be posted in its entirety on the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen website, lvwge.org. So thank you all for attending. Thank you to the candidates, and best of luck on the campaign trail. Thank you.